Called order the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Bonnie Shimilonis.
She is going to be about 20 minutes late.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Wawuski.
Here.
Darla Leclerc. Mark Bitner. Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Okay. Are you okay?
Now it's on.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so we can skip over number four because Bonnie did contact Kyle and myself saying she's going to be running late tonight. So we know she won't be joining us remotely. Uh, we can, I'm assuming skip over number five. We have no invited guests unless he would like to come up and say, okay. Uh, there's no public hearings, so we can skip over six, uh, input from the public if anyone wants to address the council. I don't see anyone for that either. Uh, so we can skip down to number eight, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Yes, Adam.
I did receive quite a few. I think a lot of us did. Um, a lot of it was congratulations on the camping on the beach. It sounded like people had some fun and that was highly successful. I did get some on that and then some frustrations on the cost of the new beach house and more frustrations on the sewer increase cost.
Okay, anyone else?
I got one same one.
As I say, I think we've pretty much got all the same on this.
I think with this and Kyle, you and I talked about it and um the other day it was to um get the information out to people ahead of time to kind of like make them aware as to why things have to happen. Because we're going to get more emails like this where people, rightfully so, are upset. But we have to show the logic behind it and the reason behind it. And maybe that'll help us kind of cool things down a little bit if everybody's got the knowledge. So if we could do that.
I would add, maybe they're not upset, maybe they're engaged and that's wonderful. I think we've succeeded in starting a conversation, which is all it is right now. It's just a what if moment and Director Mathis and I can address that more later on the agenda. But yeah, there's no recommendation right now. There's no recommendation being made by anybody. There is simply a moment where we can sit back and every once in a while, government should sit back and say, what if we do it differently? And that's all it is right now, just a community conversation.
I think more, more along the lines of the sewer rates. Sorry about that. I didn't make myself clear on that. But the sewer rates, because that's gonna, that's gonna be a hot topic.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, on to number nine, council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anyone have anything? Yes.
This was at the utilities meeting where we talked about current and future projects with um the let service lateral service laterals being replaced, yes. And then the Two Rivers Electric did a mock training um protocol where they um had kind of any mock emergency and now they, because of that, they have a better protocol to follow if something were to happen.
Seeing none, we'll go to number, uh, number 10 consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes. We have the city council regular meeting from August 18th, 2025. And the city council work session from August 25th, 2025. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, we have the room tax commission and explore two rivers board of directors joint meeting from July 29th, 2025. Committing on aging, August 4th, 2025, public utilities committee, August 4th, 2025. Public works committee from August 6th, 2025 and architectural control committee from August 22nd, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Uh, under C, we have applications and petition petitions. We have one. It's a temporary class B license for Friends of the Vanderbroe Arboretum for Garden Wine Walk on October 11th, 2025 from three o'clock PM to eight o'clock PM at 3800 Lincoln Avenue. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. The recommended action for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion. Thank you, Tim. Second by Shannon. Thank you. Any council discussion? This will be a voice vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to number 11, city council formal items. Under A, we have a resolution, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $352,978 for water system revenue bonds, series 2025A, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto.
If you wouldn't mind reading the title of B as well at this point, we can handle these two resolutions jointly.
Okay, and then uh, B, resolution authorizing issuance and sale of up to $1,038,658 for the water system revenue bond, series 2025B, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto.
These are two companion resolutions that will authorize the issuance of water revenue bonds under the Wisconsin Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, which Two Rivers has been using the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program bonds nearly every year for the past decade. It's really become a standard financing tool for how we finance water and sanitary utility improvements. It's a low interest loan program. Two Rivers has tapped into it in every single year from 2017 to 2025, with the exception of 2020. So it's a steady, affordable, predictable way, and it does advance our strategic goals of financial sustainability and infrastructure investment. Both bond issuances rely 100% on water utility revenue. Neither of them touch or depend on general obligation taxing authority. So these borrowings will not show up on your property tax bill. And it's recommended we approve them tonight.
And we are looking for a motion for the first one. We'll do a first for the one for the sale of up to 352,978. Uh, so looking for a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. Thank you, Bill. Second by Doug. Thank you. Uh, any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote foul.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc. Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby. Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye. Thank you all for that. That one passed. And then we'll do the second one under B. Uh, resolution authorizing insurance and sale of up to 1,038,658. So looking for a motion for that one.
Resonate a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution.
Mark, second by thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do another roll call vote foul.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner. Shannon Derby. Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand. Tim Petrie. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you all for that. On to C, resolution authorizing the submission of a DNR grant application for Washington Park shoreline restoration.
This agenda item is going to move forward our goal of better recreational areas, but also refocusing on the health of the rivers and not just the lake. Approval of this resolution will allow for grant submission of the DNR to stabilize eroding shoreline along the East Wind River. Director Mathis, more?
So this is a fairly small grant application that we'll put in for Washington Park. Down in kind of the lower level, the floodplain area of Washington Park, there's a lot of turf grass down there. Um, obviously water runs off of that. We maintain all the turf grass and continually mow it. And there's some fragmites, an invasive plant, kind of establishing itself along the shoreline. And then the final kind of uh piece to that is that uh the Canada geese really, really like that area because it has everything they need. They eat the grass and they've got the water. So I'm hopeful if uh we can plant natives along that strip of uh the pathway between the path and the river, uh, then we could start to deter those geese uh from pooping all over that path. And uh, of course, help with the water quality and things like that. Um, we don't have any matching funds set aside for this. What we would do in this case is use parks and rec staff uh labor as in kind to match. So we're pretty well budgeted to be able to do a number of added projects throughout the year like we have on other big grant projects. So I'd see about four to $5,000 worth of in-kind staff labor spent on doing the work. And then the rest of the grant would be grant funds and that would support uh Stantec, an environmental consultant, to help guide our work and make sure we're doing the right things, uh, and then all the supplies and anything else that we needed for the project. So.
Questions for Mike?
Yes, Adam. I just want to compliment you and you do find a lot of grants with a lot of the stuff you do is well granted. From, no pun intended.
Taken for granted.
Right, and not taken for granted either. I mean, it seems like the majority of the times you come up here and there's some kind of grant involved and hats off to you for finding those.
Anyone else?
Like you, one of the points is improve the public access. A lot of it is pretty, there's, there's fenced off and it's deep terrain to the riverfront.
Yeah, with this wouldn't be focused at all up the hill. This is all the lower level, like the lower section. So if you're up at the pickleball courts, yeah, there's that fence kind of along the bluff overlooking the river. But then you follow the path, you go down the hill into the river flat area, that's where this would be focused. And I guess it's more of a aesthetic uh improvement to and a uh nice environmental improvement to the public access, so.
It's where the condos are, correct? Down there?
Yeah.
Down that area where the condos are. Gotcha.
So yeah, it's like condos, grass, pond, grass, uh, pathway, and then the grass strip between the rivers. So I'm trying to focus maybe up to one and a half to two acres. We'll see how the budget works out of that strip primarily focusing along the, between the path and the river. Uh, maybe that kind of stretches, stretches up around. There's that little pergola down there as well, which is often covered in goose poop.
Any other questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion then?
I'd like a motion to
Thank you, Doug. Second by
I will second it.
Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? And we'll do a roll call vote foul.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Okay, thank you all for that. On to D, award of bid for contract six dash 2025, curb and gutter and paving for Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision number three.
Well, this contract provides for completion of infrastructure work in phase three. There was a bid opening on August 28th and unfortunately we only had one bid and this bid come in a little higher than expected than the project budget, which was expected project budget was 296K. So because the winning bid amount came in $47,000 higher than expected, we are getting tighten our belt on this one a bit by tightening the project scope with the removal of the pedestrian trail from this project. We can keep that trail in existing, existing gravel condition and address paving in a future year when the dollars can stretch farther. Uh, the trail is more of a want and less of a need, so we're going to push that to a future year. Funding from this project is supplemented by $102,000 of utility contributions and the remaining from the Sandy Bay Street Capital account. Matt, do you have anything else to add?
Actually, just a point of clarification as far as the funding. Um, within the city's street capital, Sandy Bay uh account was 450,000 and change. Out of that was going to be the street construction, uh, the curb and gutter and asphalt. And along with the WPS gas and electric and telecoms, all coming out of that 450,000. So um again, by tightening the scope of the project, uh, we come in within budget with a 10% contingency, um, if needed. Right now, we're not hoping to use that contingency, but it's there if we have to.
Trail was gravel before, right?
The trail is gravel. Uh, it's passable. Um, and we were originally thinking of asphalting it because of the future lots uh that are proposed or that are planted there, that the property owners would like to have that paved when they quote unquote move in. Um, but uh, we'll keep it as gravel and then pave it uh once those properties do get built on.
So the actual trail will still remain open. It just will not be ideally gravelled.
Correct. Uh, presently, uh, before the subdivision was built, uh, or this phase of the subdivision was built, the trail was gravelled and actually between Sandy Ridge and Lake Breeze, the trail is also gravelled uh between there. So in the future, we'll just make that all asphalt up to the northern, northerly limits of the subdivision, subdivision.
Beautiful tree outside. Great.
All right, Matt. I saw Mike sit in the back corner. It popped to my head. Sorry, Matt. All right, Matt. I saw Mike sit in the back corner. It popped to my head. Sorry, Matt. I'll pay for that later. If not, then we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion for the contract. Benton Construction Company of Manitowoc, based on its lowest qualified bid in the amount of amount of three hundred and forty two thousand five hundred and ninety three. Uh dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you, Mark. Any council discussion? See none, we'll do a roll call vote foul.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Woski.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Thank you all for that. On to number twelve, city managers report.
Couple items I can brief the community about. In an effort to get pedestrian crossing devices, our ongoing effort with DOT installed across Memorial Drive. The city has deployed traffic counters. Uh as was talked about earlier this summer, new DOT rules related to pedestrian crossing notifications are causing the city to pivot as to what we can hopefully install at the intersections of Lake and Memorial. And Madison and Memorial intersections. If we were able to lower the speed limit on Memorial, then there's a greater potential of DOT giving permission to use what we intended to use originally. Solar-powered rapid flashing beacons for crossing instead of the the more complex and expensive Hawk crossing device. Hawk is high-intensity activated crosswalk. At a minimum, a Hawk system can cost at least four times more than a than a rapid flashing beacon system, something like forty to forty five thousand dollars more than what we intended. Therefore, the city is using radar-operated devices that count cars and detect speed as we kick off a two-part traffic study in an effort to get the DOT to reduce the speed limit on this stretcher road. So phase one of this effort is underway now and tracking the speed of vehicles in the forty-five mile per hour speed limit zone. And then phase two will focus on vehicles in the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit zone. Uh traffic study should be complete um middle of September and then we'll use that data to help facilitate informed decision-making by the DOT. The goal is to show the DOT the speed limit should be lowered here, giving us the green light to install what we intended to originally. So we continue our struggle with the DOT, hopefully have good news in the near future there.
What is, what do you mean by lowering the speed limit? What are we lowering it to? What are we asking? Because I didn't know about this. This is. We're even doing a study. Did you know?
It it's something that we are looking at uh.
Yeah, but that was it. There's nothing before this.
Technically, about uh ten fifteen years ago, uh the city submitted a request to lower the speed limit. At least through the Madison Street intersection area to twenty-five miles an hour. So DOT's response was uh they don't have a lot of good speed data out there. Uh and from their visual observation, uh there was no intent to do a speed study. So we're taking it upon ourselves to do a very quick uh analysis to see what type of speeds we're actually seeing. Uh we downloaded uh initial data last Friday, um and we're still working through the data to see what the forty-five mile or speed limit is. Uh if it's coming in at forty-five miles an hour, the likelihood of us uh getting that lowered down to twenty-five uh is negligible or minimal. Uh if the speed limits might be closer to that thirty-five forty mile an hour range, um we might be able to lower it to uh possibly thirty-five. Which would still be an acceptable uh speed for these RRFBs.
This is just through Madison. It's not the whole stretch of Memorial Drive?
It's not the whole stretch of Memorial Drive. It's primarily so we can uh go with RRFBs versus the Hawk system. Uh because the speed limit is uh greater than forty miles an hour at the Madison Street intersection and it's a divided highway. We need to go with the more expensive Hawk system. Even though DOT told us uh in our preliminary discussions with um before the construction project was even bid. That yep, you can do um solar-powered RRFBs and uh they would just go through them and permit them. It wasn't until we started the permitting process that DOT said, no, you can't put those in. So now.
We show them that those email chains?
It was, a lot of it was uh verbal discussion with the uh construction project manager and his superior. So we have no written documentation that those conversations ever happened. Columbus Street is not planning to have any type of pedestrian activation devices uh and they point blank said they would not have them installed down there or would not permit them down there. Down at Columbus, you're playing Frogger. Yes.
That's a fun game, by the way. A lot of fun playing that back in the day. Not with my human self, but. So what's the difference between the two systems, the Hawk and the? RRFB?
The RRFB, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons are, they just flash yellow. So basically cautionary saying there's a crosswalk coming up, um caution, there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. The Hawk system is a little more high-tech, high-advanced. Um it's multiple lights. It will start out as a dark signal. So all the uh signal heads are dark. It will then go to a flashing yellow beacon. Then it will turn to a solid yellow beacon and then ultimately a red solid beacon, meaning stop. Uh there's multiple signs on it, basically yield to pedestrians, uh stop on red, et cetera. Um and you not only need uh the flashing symbols off on the shoulders, you also need them overhead. So.
What's the difference in costs again?
To be determined. We're still waiting for a cost back from our traffic signal manufacturer. Um but anticipated seeing some preliminary costs uh on other projects. Uh a RFB system for an intersection would be somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. With the Hawk system, we could be looking upwards to ninety thousand dollars. But those are trying to extrapolate other municipalities' uh proposals and whatnot. So we don't have a firm number yet.
Triple or quadruple?
Last question?
Matt, while you're up here, do you wanna give any other construction updates? And because then.
I wasn't sure if you were done yet.
Then I think for the evening and then Mike and I can go.
Uh other updates as far as construction, uh utilities committee already heard this. Uh Benton Construction is making great progress on Harbor Sixteenth and Emmett Street. All the sanitary sewer mains have been installed. The water main on Harbor and Sixteenth, for the most part, is completed. They uh pressure tested the mains and are now safe testing the water inside of it to get a safe samples. Once they uh achieve that, they can now transfer to Water Services on Harbor and Sixteenth. Um as they're waiting for these safe samples, they've been installing the water main on Emmett Street. They were hoping to finish today, if not early tomorrow. Uh and hopefully the safe sample will come back tomorrow and they'll be able to jump on those uh water services and sanitary laterals. Uh after the laterals are in, they'll do the storm sewer uh in uh probably starting in about two to three weeks. And then we'll start seeing pavement going down. So uh a lot of progress is being made in a short period of time on that project. Um twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Mammoth Construction lead service lateral. All the laterals have been installed. Uh as of last week and now the final restoration work uh in coming up to council between Utilities Committee and Council. Uh we did receive a phone call back from Mammoth Construction. They will be out uh tomorrow, starting to do some of the backfilling of that new curb and gutter. Along with topsoil and seeding. The twenty twenty-five LSL program uh for essential sewer and water. They were supposed to be out getting um inspections last week of properties up in around Twenty Second and Jackson. Um they may have done a few last week, but we haven't seen any return to us. Uh so we can make sure that they have been scheduled as far as estimates prepared. Um soon as we get them, they can start uh working on uh doing replacements up there uh of lead services and sanitary laterals. So the east side from the East River south of Twenty Second is uh under construction, shall we say, so. And that's primarily, well, outside City Hall, the uh uh storm drain um was very deteriorated. So Public Works is undertaking that project today, tomorrow, uh and hopefully we'll have that open back up by the weekend. And project across the street, we have no- nothing to do with that one, but uh the noise that we're hearing occasionally is uh the demolition of the family video, so.
Thank you. Considering the future of the beach concession stand, last week, we started a what-if conversation about the future of this nineteen fifties-era concession stand at Neshota Beach. Every once in a while, governments take a step back and say, what if we do this differently? And since we have to sink several thousand dollars into the near future in this building anyway, it seemed like a great time to say what if. At this point, there's no recommendation on this project that's being made or that has been made. We're simply analyzing possibilities and asking what might be possible if we reimagine this place that we all care a lot about. Currently, almost all, almost all beach operations depend on the city's general fund, which means property tax dollars pay for the daily beach grooming, trash pickup, porta-potties, utilities for concessions and the building itself. Heavily dependent on the general fund. The only exception are the beach concerts, which are funded by sponsorships. The concerts are funded by sponsorships and donations. The rest of it is dependent on property tax dollars. So a modernized beach pavilion building could change this math equation by creating new revenue sources that don't exist today. Lakeview beach reservations for weddings, birthdays, reunions, community gatherings. There's a lot of demand for quality rental venues, especially with a view like that. There's a lot of revenue we're missing out on on this. What if we could enjoy that extra revenue? Expanded food and beverage offerings that turn the concessions into a true dining destination. Rather than just a place for kids to grab hot dogs and nachos when they're hungry, this could be a place mom and dad go to alone for date night, like a destination. There's a lot of revenue we're missing out on on this. What if we could enjoy that extra revenue? This new revenue generated from such a beach pavilion could help cover the financing for construction and ongoing operations. While also reducing the dependency on property taxes to fund the beach. In the long run, it could end up being less expensive and more prudent to demolish the old building and build something new. This is just about starting a conversation about responsible long-term planning, thinking many years down the road and asking how we could approve our greatest natural asset. While creating opportunities to strengthen our financial sustainability that we don't currently have. So that's kind of the narrative, how I'm approaching this topic. Mike, do you have anything you wanna add?
I would just add uh some of the research we've done since the uh work session. So that next time we have a conversation, we can have even more kind of clear information. Uh we met with the health departments and so we have a very good, clear idea of what we need to do to get the current concession stand facility up to code. Um overall, it'd be fairly manageable to get it up to code, the interior of it. Uh then also today, I met with Hammond Construction. Uh they came out with an architect and uh they're gonna be looking into what it would take to do a little bit more of a robust renovation of the restrooms and the concession stand. So hopefully we'll have some numbers on renovations. And then um we've been working on the business plan more for a brand-new facility if we went that direction. Uh kind of had some ideas here today and last couple days that I think could actually make that business plan much stronger. So um I. There's a whole in-depth conversation with that, so I'm not gonna go uh super far i- into that. But yeah, next time we get together, we should have a lot more uh clear information for all of you to think about how we uh approach the the situation, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Adam.
Uh when you meet with Hammond Construction, are you gonna go over ways to re-envision?
So what I directed them.
Just to redo?
Uh I directed them to uh he- he- help me out with getting some architectural plans. Uh they're, they're doing us a solid. There'll probably be some fees associated with the design and planning. Because they know that they're not guaranteed the job if it ever goes out, because we'll have to bid public uh publicly. So I asked them to see if they could double capacity in the restroom building, because that was a major goal for us, was doubling capacity in the restroom. And then make improvements to the concession stand that could perhaps not drastically change our operations, but significantly improve our operations and the types of things that we could do. Um we need more space if we wanted to say do shaved ice. We literally just don't have the counter space. Or we don't have the electrical capacity to run Nesko's if we cooked offsite and brought things in. Um so those are the two things I focused on with them. Uh the architect kept saying, well, I know you want the rental space. I'm like, you're probably not gonna be able. In this middle-of-the-road uh uh situation, we probably wouldn't be able to afford uh or wouldn't be interested in a rental space because that significantly takes the cost up. So those were kind of the two things I uh directed them on and maybe we'll be able to piece those components out on what we think would be a good route. Um good news, the architect that we sent the nineteen fifty-five plans to was that the main, the cinder block walls within the building are um. Very likely not load-bearing, which is um a good thing for us, that we could perhaps rearrange the inside of the building a little bit. So um yeah, that was the heart of the conversation today with with Hammond.
I was thinking you could probably still do some kind of a rental space, even if it's on a smaller edge, if you reconfigure that building.
How much do you want me to throw numbers?
Well, I mean, I don't think.
I got a back, I got a back-of-the-napkin number uh from Hammond um today. And if you wanna call me up tomorrow and talk to me about it, I'd be happy to do that. Uh it's, yeah, there's, could be significant costs still to moving the interior of that building around.
Just fun to explore and see what you could do with what's already there yet and.
Yep. So yeah, it's some good ideas uh going around on multiple pathways, but I think we have some creative revenue opportunities that. Even since the work play uh session that we've refined, that would take a very in-depth conversation someday uh to go that route. Um so I hope you're ready for that one eventually. And the next thing I'd like to do is at least get you all out to the concession stand. Uh to just take a walk through it and see what we're dealing with. Um at the same time, I extended an invitation to you all to come out to Riverside Park too, because uh there's another very large grant opportunity. I'm anxiously awaiting uh word on on how we did on that application with DNR for Riverside. And there might be some pretty significant investments over at Riverside is coming as well. Um so just trying to take in the totality of all the capital projects and uh what we have before us, uh I think is a good thing to do, so. Picnic shelter right now gets uh rented for seventy-five dollars for a day to residents, a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for non-residents. And this year, it was rented twenty-nine times from May thirtieth to today. So and that's the only season that we actually rent it. If you wanted it in the off-season, you don't have to rent it. It's just first come, first served. That's how all of our picnic shelters work, actually.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, when we did um the Central Park West, there was a committee dedicated just to that project.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if you plan on doing that. And then also, we were doing a community drive to drum up money.
I think there would be a very large portion of that pro- this project, if we're able to pull it off, that would be community fundraising and sponsorships, yes, yeah. Uh talking about the overall costs at the last meeting, you know, and I made some conjectures perhaps above and beyond the uh cited cost, estimated cost by the architect. Uh thinking, you know, if we drag this out down the road, things could get more expensive. That's literally me guessing uh what inflation's gonna do. Uh we know the hard numbers, one point nine was the estimate without demolition. Um I could see a very large portion of that. And again, I didn't want to even get into like, how much could we fundraise? How much is a city contribution? I don't think I was ever. Well, it'd be great if you just wanna throw two point five million dollars at it, but I don't think that's probably responsible and none of us uh would agree with that. So uh yeah, there's discussions to be had, how much effort uh we need to put into fundraising and what can we work on as a team to put together as a borrowing from the city.
Yeah, there's discussions to be had, how much effort we need to put into fundraising and what can we work on as a team to put together as a borrowing from the city, so.
And we'll keep exploring these until council says, no, that's far enough. We can keep exploring this conversation and putting meat on the bone until you guys say that's not.
This is, it's not a set agenda item. This isn't a report. So I hate to get ahead of ourselves even tonight because everybody's curious about it. So I just don't know how much farther you guys want to go.
My comment is merely a suggestion, but I think it would behoove us and benefit all the existing restaurant businesses. If we had some sort of drive-up center with menus that the people who visit the beach could perhaps look at menus and use it as a dropout point for restaurants downtown to deliver food. Rather than depending completely on the concession stand, we have a lot of existing businesses. I bet you they would like that idea if that would be possible. And that would be just merely a drive-up, drop-off center.
And we're definitely open to super creative ideas for businesses and how they get involved. The news, slight City Managers news update, the cold brew coffee cart by Cool City, unfortunately, they couldn't get that licensed by the Health Department. So the, the cart is not moving forward. But we did pilot bottled, pre-bottled cold brew that they bottled at the concession stand this last weekend as part of the campout. That was kind of fun and something different. So definitely up for creative ideas and how we can make that, take the best of, make the most out of that beach, so.
And your overnight camping adventure was a good time, hadn't you?
The overnight camping adventure was great. I didn't sleep much, but we had two hundred and forty-three people attend the campouts. We had seventy-five families, individual families signed up, pre-registered. Some of those didn't show up, maybe about fifteen people didn't show up. So we had sixty of the families show up, still two hundred and forty-three people. Unbelievable weather and everything, all the reviews I'm getting so far are really good. Couple constructive pieces of feedback on how to improve it as well. Unbelievably big thank you to our scout troop, nine twenty-seven. They brought their crew and they manned three patio fireplaces for making smores in the parking lot. They manned the bonfire on the beach. They put out all the stakes on the beach that marked where all the campsites were going to go. And then they also filled in a couple really giant holes that had been dug in the sand during the day leading up to that. Because we couldn't get the groomer through at that point in the day, so the scouts used shovels and rakes and filled in those holes. So unbelievably big thank you to them. Optimus Club and the rock star that is Judy Goodchild made breakfast sandwiches for everybody as a part of the event. And of course Rotary and Two Rivers Business Association also are all a part of the planning, so kind of a good community effort all around. And I think overall, the beach is clean. There was nothing left over. You probably couldn't even tell that there was anything that happened the night before, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering, it's been a while, but we had talked pretty extensively about the renovation over at the skate park. I know it's not on our agenda, but.
That's the one I was teasing you about for coming out for a tour here eventually, is that.
Oh, you were talking about that one over there.
Yeah, that's Riverside Park and the skate park. I have a major DNR stewardship grant out that I'm waiting for a response on. Yeah, we need to talk about that eventually too, going into capital season. I'm hopeful that I will know here by the end of September where we stand on that stewardship grant. Initial feedback is very good, so. I think we should, yes. Between the two sites or something like that, or, yeah. What else I have? That's about it.
I have nothing further.
Awesome. Okay, then on to number thirteen for information only. We have a city council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, in two weeks at six o'clock PM and then a city council work session Monday, September twenty-ninth at six o'clock PM. Other than that, looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Seconded by Shannon. Any council discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote on favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.